Go to our 920 item. I'll read it again. Presentation of Brown Act refresher and related changes in the law effective 2023 County Council.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
For the opportunity to present today. Weird being here. But I'm going to get through it. Johanna is loading up a PowerPoint, which I did myself, so I'm responsible for any glitches or problems if you cannot read it. But as she's doing that, because I know time is an issue, today I'm just going to give a very brief refresher course on the Brown Act. I don't believe that your Board actually needs that. You're very proficient with regard to the Brown Act, but it never hurts to have a few reminders. And I'm also going to be talking about some, there it is, some recent developments in the laws, particularly Assembly Bill 2449 and Senate Bill 1100. The Brown Act was authored by Ralph Milton Brown, and it was passed in 1953, and it was designed to safeguard the public's right to access and transparency. There were cases where meetings of substance were held in what can only be called smoky-back rooms, where a bunch of fellows decided to discuss all the business that the public was then going to have to pay for. The Brown Act sought to prevent that from happening, and you'll find the Brown Act beginning in Government Code Section 54950. The intent of the Brown Act, I think, is actually, as it's referenced in the law, is actually quite poetic. The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what's good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so they may retain counsel, control over the instruments they have created. And that is why, with very limited exceptions that we'll talk about briefly today, all meetings of a legislative body of a local agency must be open and public. This can really be kind of just easily summarized by saying that the business conducted on behalf of the public is most certainly the public's business. They should know what they pay for, they should know what their representatives are doing, and they should know how items are discussed and how deliberations are conducted. So who's subject to the Brown Act? All governing boards of local governments, advisory and standing subcommittees, all boards, committees, and bodies created by federal or state law. Now, you know that oftentimes there'll be the creation of an ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee is not subject to the Brown Act, but it must be only for a very particular purpose. That purpose must be defined well, and when the purpose is achieved, the ad hoc committee must dissolve. You cannot have an ongoing ad hoc committee because, in that case, it's a standing committee. So what is a meeting? I still hear from various jurisdictions that, well, a meeting is only if action is taken, and that's not at all true. It is no longer 1950 when that might have been true, but now it is a meeting of the majority of the members of a legislative body to hear, discuss, or deliberate on government business. Once that occurs, you have now triggered Brown Act requirements. So what is not a meeting is every time if you're at a store and you see two other board members, you all have to scatter two points east, south, and west. What is not a meeting? A conference, a training, a seminar, community forums, the meetings of other government bodies, social occasions. Can you all attend the same wedding? Certainly. What you cannot do at any of these events is huddle together in three or greater number and discuss county business. Now, with social media particularly and electronic communications, violations of the Brown Act actually can be much easier to inadvertently accomplish. A majority may not use a telephone, email, fax, internet-based social media platform, or other electronic means or devices, or an intermediate to discuss, develop a consensus agreement, or decision. So you have to be careful when you receive emails if someone says, "I'd like to do X", and it's sent to all of you. One of the members says, "I would like to do X." A second member says, "I agree. I think we should do X." Now you have a problem, because you're all on the communication. So it is best to avoid those. Now, does that mean emails can't be sent? Of course not. They can be informational emails. Attached here is a white paper from the Department of Justice on X. You can certainly do that. So it is not, what you have to worry about as a body is to ensure that you're not inadvertently developing a consensus on a matter within your jurisdiction that is outside of the open and public. Outside the open and public meeting.
Thank you.
Using an intermediary is just as simple as one of the supervisors can tell Johanna, "I want to do X," and then they say, "Johanna, go ask another supervisor about doing X." And Johanna goes to three and comes back and says, "Well, you've got three." That is absolutely a violation of the Brown Act, not by Johanna, because she's not a member of a legislative body, but by whichever supervisor sent her, and the ones who inadvertently participated. So the basic notice for a regular meeting is 72 hours in advance, special meeting 24, emergency meeting one hour in advance. Notice always has to be posted in an accessible location and on the local entity's website if you have one. So for example, the 72 hours, if you post it inside a building, and the building is closed for 12 hours a day, you can only count the time the building's open. That's why the county posts outside the building, which people have access to 24/7. So the agenda itself has to contain a brief description of every item, which have to be clear enough to be understood by members of the public. And each agenda item for a regular meeting has to include time for public comment on that item, each and every item on the agenda. When I do these trainings to various local bodies, I tell them, "The agenda is the promise you make to the public. Here's what we're going to talk about. Here's what we might take action on." And then keeping within the bounds of that agenda item is how a legislative body keeps that promise to the public. So it is a matter of public trust. And while an agenda item is usually 20 words or less, it has to be enough for the public to understand. You can't just say, "We're going to talk about patrol cars." That tells the public nothing. Are you going to purchase them, wash them, drive them? What are you going to do? But you have to be able to alert the public. So again, the public can see, is this worth my time to listen to? Is it worth my time to participate? Now, normally, you cannot have an action or even a discussion on an item not appearing on the agenda, except for public input. As you know, the public is entitled to speak on an item that is not before you on the agenda, if it's within your subject matter jurisdiction. And because you have a plenary authority where you can adopt a resolution to recommend or to support many things, that jurisdiction is relatively broad for purposes of public input. You can, in those circumstances, ask a question for clarification, make announcements, you can ask staff to come back with an item for discussion, review, or consideration. Now, obviously, you can take action if there's an emergency, or what we call an extra, the need to take immediate action, which came to the attention of the Board after the agenda was posted, but again, an immediate need. Now, the determination of that normally would require a two-thirds vote of the members of the body, which is four in this case. However, if less than two-thirds are present, then just a unanimous vote. Now, that's not the case for all matters, where your Board has to approve certain things by four-fifths vote, but it is when it comes to an extra item. That's why you may recall there have been circumstances where there were only three of you, and you took a vote unanimously to approve an extra, and that is well within the bounds of the law. Okay, so the location of meetings, they have to be held within your jurisdiction. There are exceptions. You can go out to inspect real property, personal property. You can meet with federal or state officials, or you could hold a closed session with your county council. So the rights of the public here are to address the legislative body on both agenda, which is the public comment, and non-agenda, public input items. Unless subject to a closed session exception, everything in a meeting of your body has to be open and public. And the public is entitled to be accommodated, if disabled, to ensure access. They're entitled to obtain copies of all written materials that are distributed to you, except for privileged materials, and they're able to audio and video record and take photos of proceedings or broadcast them, unless doing so creates a disruption. Closed session, as you know, has to be narrowly construed. The agenda has to contain a brief description of each item, and each item requires a pre-close session announcement and a post-close session report. That is why your Board reads the items listed on the closed session before you go into closed session, and after you report out if and whether there is any action taken. Other than those requirements, the confidentiality of closed session has to be strictly observed. So closed session is personnel matters, labor negotiations, pending litigation, real property negotiations, and the security of public facilities and services. Violations of the Brown Act can lead to invalidation of an agency's action, payment of a challenger's attorney's fees, civil liability, and criminal liability. What I can tell you, however, is the purpose of the Brown Act is not to set up an ambush or a gotcha for legislative bodies. The purpose of the Brown Act is to keep everyone aware that democracy is messy, and deliberations of public issues have to take place in open session, so the public can participate, listen, comment, et cetera. And while I think it must be incredibly difficult for your Board to have to engage in all of these deliberations in public, it is still the right of the public to see and hear those deliberations as they occur. Now, telephone conferencing or teleconferencing under the Brown Act, I put till the end because it leads me into 2449. Traditional teleconferencing under the Brown Act can be used if you meet the requirements of Government Code Section 54953, which means you have to post an agenda at all teleconference locations. Each teleconference location has to be identified in the notice and the agenda, and each such location must be accessible to the public. So in that kind of a case, if a board member was traveling, and of course, traveling had to stop over at Howard Johnson's to, not the club, but Howard Johnson's, to have, to sleep, and you decided to, and you had given the 72-hour notice of that location, you would have to post it outside your door, and if someone came knocking, you'd have to let them in to sit. Hopefully, you've arranged a conference room at the hotel, but if not, it would be wherever you are. That's why if you're on a cruise, you can't do teleconferencing, because obviously, there's no way for the public to have access. 361, Assembly Bill 361, until January 1 of 2024, authorizes a body to use teleconferencing without complying with all of those requirements as far as agenda requirements, notice, and access to the public at that particular location. But it only applies in very specific circumstances. Proclaimed state of emergency, where state and local officials or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. Hold a meeting during a proclaimed state of emergency for determining by majority of vote whether, as a result of that emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risks to the safety of you and the attendees, or the legislative body holds a meeting during a proclaimed state of emergency and determines pursuant to majority of vote that, as a result of the emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk. Now, Assembly Bill 2449, it no longer requires you to post notice outside your hotel room or outside a conference room at a hotel, or wherever you happen to be when you wish to teleconference as a board member. It no longer requires a state of emergency. However, it is still relatively limiting. It does allow, and this is until January 1 of 2026, members of a legislative body to use telephone conferencing, teleconferencing, without noticing their locations and making them publicly accessible if certain requirements are met. At least a quorum of the body has to participate in person at a single physical location. That location is usually your meeting location, which would be here for your Board. You have to provide two-way audiovisual platforms or two-way telephone service and a live webcasting of the meeting, by which the public may remotely hear and visually observe the meeting, and also remotely address the body. You have to give notice of the means for the public to access the meeting and offer public comment. You have to identify an opportunity for all persons to attend via a call-in or internet-based service option. You have to provide an opportunity for the public to address the legislative body and offer comment. Now, it does authorize a member of the legislative body to participate in a meeting remotely only if one of the following circumstances applies. The member notifies the legislative body at the earliest opportunity possible, including just at the start of a regular meeting, of the need to participate remotely for just cause, which has to include a general description of the circumstances related to their need. The provisions cannot be used for more than, by a particular member, for more than two meetings in a calendar year. So if you have just cause, which is defined specifically in the law, you can only use it twice. Now, a member can also ask the legislative body to allow them to participate remotely as a result of emergency circumstances. And again, the body has to, is required to request a general description as to why that is necessary. It does not require, obviously, a member to disclose any medical diagnosis or disability or any personal medical information at all. So you may decide as a body to allow members to participate if the request does not allow sufficient time to place proposed action on such a request on the posted agenda. But then you take it up at the beginning of the meeting as specified. And the above provisions cannot serve as a means for any member to participate solely by telephone conference for a remote location for a period of more than three consecutive months or 20 percent. Or the local agency within a calendar year, or more than two meetings if the legislative body regularly uses fewer than 10 times in a calendar year. And those conditions apply to the emergency circumstances. Okay, so just cause under 2449 means childcare or caregiving, a contagious illness, or a need related to a physical or mental disability not otherwise accommodated, travel while on official business, or in another state. Emergency is defined as a physical or family medical emergency that prevents a member from attending. So the important thing here to remember about 2449 for any legislative bodies is to provide notice to the Board as soon as you're aware of the circumstances, provide a brief description that does not, again, require any member of a legislative body to disclose personal medical information. It's not intended to be invasive in that way. And then you just have to keep track of the limitations as to how often each member may use one of those particular sections. And finally, Senate Bill 1100. Now presently, as you realize, if there is a disruption in a board meeting, your Board may clear the room and wait, and then resume action later. What Senate Bill 1100 does is allow the presiding member of the legislative body conducting a meeting, or designee, to remove or cause the removal of an individual for disrupting the meeting. The individual. Prior to removing an individual, the presiding member or designee shall warn the individual their behavior is disrupting, and that failure to cease may result in their removal. If it continues, then you may remove them if they do not promptly cease their behavior. Disrupting for purposes of Senate Bill 1100 means engaging in behavior during a meeting that actually disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders imfeasible the orderly conduct of a meeting. It could be failure to comply with regulations adopted by the Board. It could be engaging in behavior that constitutes a use of force, or a true threat of a use of force. A use of force, a threat, is defined as one that a reasonable observer would perceive as an actual threat. And not a moment too soon, we're at the end. I do think that the changes in the law under 2449 are a positive step. You'll notice it has a sunset date, and I think that is because the legislature frankly wants to see how it's all going to work. One of the things I think people came to realize that Zoom and other types of platforms can be very beneficial, particularly for the public to have access from locations. And it can also be very helpful for board members, because you have many jobs for the county that require travel, and that travel sometimes can put you away from the county seat on any given Tuesday board meeting purposes.
Thank you. Anything from the Board? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Thank you for the overview, especially of 2449. So how it relates to our board meetings, certainly one thing, and it does clarify how we can do remote attendance, provided generally we have a quorum in person here. It also applies to most of our committees, and my questions are kind of focused on that. We have some committees in transition, and their compliance with Brown Act stuff, through no fault of anybody, has been spotty just in the time I've been on this Board. So the general rule that we're going to be following here in the board chambers, the way I'm reading it, would fall under subdivision E1 of AB 2449, but there appears to be in paragraph three of subdivision B, a possibility at least, that if a committee wanted to continue basically in all Zoom format, they could do so provided they followed all those agenda requirements. But it's a complicated, chunky monkey, because all those remote locations would have to be open to the public and would have to have agendas posted. I'm just trying to figure out, depending on the committee, I either have a committee in Scotts Valley that has no internet and no practical ability to teleconference right now, or I have some other committees that are so, I don't want to use the word addicted, but they've become accustomed to all Zoom meetings and haven't necessarily fully considered what the transition back to hybrid formats or all in-person formats is going to pose for them. So just kind of posing that problem generally, we have a wide number of committees, some that are large in nature, some that are distributed around the county, some that do have the ability, and prior to COVID did meet in person. So I'm casting about for guidance that we can share with the public and also share with our committees about moving ahead, how they can comply with this law.
Well, as I said, it's a very good question, and I think it's going to come up multiple times with all of these bodies. The 2449 is not a panacea. It does not make complete sense out of this, because it is restrictive by its nature. And so, for example, if you have a five-member advisory body, three of those members are going to have to be in a physical location together. Two of them could be. But again, you have to, you have to meet the definition of just cause or emergency. So it is not convenience, and it is not, this works better for me. None of those things apply. It is rigid in its application to a finding of just cause, which the entity itself is going to have to agree with, which oftentimes, as things come up, it's going to be at the beginning of a meeting. But it's not going to allow a hybrid, in the same way that hybrids have, were done under the governor's executive order, certainly. And even under a state of emergency, it's going to restrict it in the manner I've just described. Yeah?
I guess I'm looking for a one-page cheat sheet that I can podcast all over my.
I'm happy to prepare one for you.
Thank you.
Who's first? Supervisor Spatier?
I just want to ask Supervisor Green, what section were you looking at?
Well, I think, all these things, so there is focus on paragraph three of subdivision B, so.
Paragraph three.
Subdivision B, and that seems to imply, and just to confirm with counsel, it does seem to allow.
Are you in section one, section two, section three? Which section of the bill are you on?
Oh, I think, may I? I think it's if the legislative body of a local agency elects to use teleconferencing, it shall post agendas at all teleconference locations. Is it that one?
Yes.
All right. But this has to do with the traditional method of teleconferencing.
Yeah, because I don't think there's anything in here that says that we can continue to be all Zoom. I think there needs to be a quorum, or you need to post where the public areas that you will be holding your meeting and teleconferencing from, or else you have to have that quorum, and you can teleconference in through AB 2449. But I don't see anything in here. That's why I wanted to see what you were looking at, because I don't see anything that says we can continue what we've done in the past with other committees.
Well, my reading would be different. So at the very bottom of B3, it says, for example, could we do all Zoom all the time? The last sentence indicates possibly it could, if at least a quorum of the members of the body participate from locations within the boundaries of the territory. So again, we would have to have a quorum in territory for the county if we were to go back to all Zoom for the Board. If I had, for example, a community in Scotts Valley that all wanted to Zoom in from home, as long as they were all Zooming in from home within the geographical area that they represent, I think that, I think the way I'm reading it, that may be possible. It may not be practical, given that they may have to open up those Zoom locations and post agendas and what have you. But it looks to me like there's at least an option for a all-Zoom format to continue, provided you follow the slightly more rigorous agenda posting requirements. But it is possible I'm misreading that.
I believe that the section you're referring to is addressing the traditional teleconferencing. And the problem with this is the legislature, I guess, in an effort for legislative economy, decided to put all of these things together into 54953. So it becomes, it becomes much more complicated than need be. It also addresses 361, and then it further addresses 2449. So if you look at, what I will do is I will provide you with a breakdown of where those sections stop and start, so that you can see that. And then, as I said, I'm happy to provide a one-page sheet if you'd like to have that for your advisory bodies.
Yeah, and if that could just be sent to all of the committee chairs? Susan?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, that would be great.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. If there's a document that's brought the day of, I think you stated this, but I want to be, I want to understand it better. Is, like, let's say there's a, we do have consideration of extra items not appearing on the agenda, and so that would be a way someone could bring someone forward, bring something forward. And if there's a document brought the day of that I want to read off, it would have to be brought in that section? That's, like, so like, for example, if I want to bring a proclamation, I have to bring the document with, and then how do I, what do we do to get it to the public on that?
The general rule is that when your Board receives a document, the public must receive it also.
Okay.
Now, certain things, certain things that may be provided that are explanatory, like PowerPoints, you're not going to have those generally until the day of, sometimes in But what the law looks at is to attempt to make sure that both your Board and the public has these things at least 72 hours. Extras, as you point out, obviously will not, and some presentation material. But at the time your Board receives it, so must the public.
And so is reading it sufficient enough, or does the document need to be passed out?
Well, it depends upon what it is. If it's a paragraph, reading it is. If it's a paragraph, reading it is likely sufficient. But, and there are times when your board has quite rightly said, you know, this is a voluminous document and the public hasn't had time to review it, we're going to put it over to give them that time. You've done that on multiple occasions with lengthy documents. The point of the requirement is to ensure that the public has an opportunity to review and consider whatever is in front of you so their comments have perhaps more significance to them, so they understand the issues and can pinpoint exactly what they want to be able to say to a body, but also so that your board can ensure that all of the information for your consideration and discussion is available to you and to the public.
All right. My last question is like, regarding description of items on the agenda, when you create the agenda, it needs to be under 20 words. But with the written explanation, does it need to be general? Is there any room for like auspicious wording or wording that reflects negatively on the item?
It's really not meant to be an editorial. It's merely just meant to be a descriptor. So, for example, if you are going to, if you want to have a discussion about the Brown Act and all you're going to do is discuss it, then you put discussion of Brown Act requirements. And it would be better if you specified which Brown Act requirements you wanted to discuss. But it's 20 words is a general rule. It's not really a requirement that you stay under, it can be a little bit over. But it's supposed to be enough so the public can understand, okay, on this item, they're just going to discuss it, but there's no action. So, if the public thinks, well, I'll wait until they, this culminates in a vote for some type of action, they may not want to attend. If you put discussion only, then you can't take action. You can direct staff to bring something back to you or to look into something for further review, but you cannot take action as a body. So, the description should include discussion and consideration of board protocols to address AB 2449. Now, the public knows exactly what you might do and as to what. So, they have time to review 2449. They have time to consider the protocols that, if the document, and the document should be available 72 hours in advance, and they'll have time to review that to see whether they like those protocols. The public oftentimes has very good ideas that your board takes note of and incorporates.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Just last question. Although everyone's very accustomed to it, under 2449, teleconferencing is entirely optional, right? So, for those smaller committees, may have remote internet access issues or just we don't have enough horses to run a Zoom and run a meeting, a local committee can set its own rules.
Absolutely.
Based on its own needs and abilities.
A physical presence meeting is always appropriate. 2449 simply allows for a hybrid in the manner described.
Okay, I'll open it to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers?
My name is Robert Stark. I was the general manager of the Carberry County Water District and had four boards of directors for 35 years. I would suggest, I would ask if or recommend that this presentation be mailed to every agency as the special district's handbook used to back in the days of old Cameron Reeves, and that a cover letter by counsel beyond that recommending that this be placed on their next agenda and that agenda be sent back to show that every agency, and I realize that's a lot of agencies, cemetery districts, lighting districts, sidewalk districts, water districts, fire, that's a lot of districts, I understand that. But I have seen repeatedly in my 35 years, attempts to, oh, let's just get it done. God, do we have to put it on an agenda? Let's just do it and be done with it. And that can't be the way it is. So, that is just my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else in the chambers? Then we'll go to the Zoom room. We have Betsy Khan. You can state your name. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Betsy Khan for the Essential Public Information Center. I totally agree with Mr. Stark, of course, and I, this, the Brown Act is probably one of my favorite pieces of legislation, as you can imagine. My work entails attending and concentrating on the actions taken by elected bodies all through the county and in the region and sometimes at the state level. I will advocate for the use of remote participation capacity building at every opportunity because that is so powerful. It also improves the commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions for so many people in the last two and a half years owing to the COVID pandemic. I have saved hundreds of dollars of gasoline and wear and tear my vehicle, hours of my time to drive to meetings and then get an hour's worth of information, come back and use that to report. So, I think that's really important. I appreciate every minute of your deliberation. I also so appreciate Ms. Grant. I think she knows how much I have, have, yes, thank you, Anita. Over these years, how much I appreciate her. But I do want to say, Anita, when you're swiveling back and forth in your chair, sometimes your head turns away from the microphone, so pieces of what you're saying are not actually audible. I try very hard to listen closely. Thank you so much, everybody.
May I respond that normally when I give this presentation, I'm standing. So, it's just contrary for an attorney to make a presentation from a seated position, but points well taken, Ms. Khan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Julia Bono. Got three minutes, if you want to state your name.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to get a copy of this presentation and perhaps other people would as well. Can you let me know how this will be disseminated to the public?
CAO Parker?
Yes, we'll place it on Granicus. And also, I was also thinking that we might put it on the committee's webpage, but I'll have to check with IT to see if that's possible.
Thank you. And Supervisor Spatier?
I know that Sam Houston always does a really good job. Every single time that we have a meeting, he splits off different portions of the meeting so that people can watch three to 10 minutes rather than eight to 10 hours to find those golden nuggets. And so, I am certain that it's possible to maybe work with our CAO to get that specific presentation segregated and easily send a link to all of the agencies or all of the committees to make sure they have access to that. So, I think that's possible.
So, include a link of this presentation with the, with the slides to all of our chairs and committees and agencies? Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Houston, for doing that every single week.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Yeah, I just did like the suggestion the gentleman had, a model agenda, you know, here's where it goes, here's your findings, 2449. If there is an extra item to be added, there is a thing you do. So, having basically a blueprint for them to follow, I think, would be super helpful, not only in Brown Act compliance, but in their own thought process about how they're supposed to conduct these meetings. So, something of a model agenda would be helpful.
That's the board's wish. I'm happy to do that.
That's fine.
Hey, I see three heads.
All right. Thank you.